Oh yeah, I'll say.
This is a public meeting of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, WIBD, and other media sources that requested notice of our meetings. This time, I'm going to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We recognize a quorum of our board with all seven members present. With that, next on our agenda is the consideration to approve the agenda. The agenda was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve our agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We move then immediately to public participation. And I have a total of 15 participant comment cards. And so, as this board knows, normally we allot three minutes to each speaker, a half hour in total. We would run out of time. And so, Board Policy 187 allows us by simple majority vote to extend that time so that all speakers may speak. So I would make a motion to permit all, I want to be sure I have this, 15 speakers, up to three minutes each. Would there be a second?
A second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to extend the amount of time to permit all 15 speakers to speak. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. So with that, I will read the Board President's announcement. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So I'll now invite our participants forward to speak. There's a visible timer behind me to help manage your time. And given the number of participants, what I will do is I will call the speaker forward, and I'll indicate who's on deck, so the next speaker can prepare themselves. And to help ensure that all participants are heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, we ask that you please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. I'll now invite our first public participant forward, and that is Sue True. And Noah Minty is on deck. Ms. True, it says here that you are a resident and a parent or guardian of a student in the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. So the next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Sue True, and I do live in the district. I have two school-age kids that used to attend West Bend Public Schools. In fact, I can actually remember leading Kringle fundraisers with some individuals that went on to join the school board. I'm here tonight to support the individuals that have written letters to the editor of the Daily News in regards to West Bend's curriculum. I wanted to note that I completely agree with editorials like, "Why are my tax dollars funding inappropriate books for minors?" Or better yet, the one entitled, "Does the West Bend School District Want to Earn the Trust of the Community?" I wish I had confidence in the West Bend's public school system, but when I attend meetings where individuals are voicing their concerns about reading lists for middle-school curriculum and the immediate response from the school representative is literally to ask that citizen to clarify, "What exactly do you find offensive about the F-word?", I'm out. I've listened to school representatives explaining that gender identity is far more common today than years past, and because of that, West Bend School District needs to transform the curriculum in order to accommodate those students. I wholeheartedly disagree with that premise. If you want to help students with identity issues, then teach them about their true identity. Every one of them is a member of the first and finest constitutional republic. Why wouldn't we want to focus on the founding of this constitutional republic, which was never a democracy? Why wouldn't we want to focus on the battles that were previously fought for their freedom? And I guarantee students would very soon recognize that no matter what they're going through in life, whether it's family issues, financial issues, addiction, or any circumstance, as members of this constitutional republic, those circumstances are temporary, whereas these students' potential is not. Now imagine a reading list that focused on Martin Luther King Jr.'s Letter from a Birmingham Jail. After reading a nine-page letter that he wrote to his closest church buddies that basically dissed him when he was arrested, I'm willing to bet that any teen that ever felt lonely may realize that the current situation they're in really isn't that bad. Imagine reading from a reading list that focused on two miserable presidents describing the amazing, terrible, and totally true story of the Civil War. Who knew a book about the Civil War could actually be entertaining and interesting rather than just depressing and embarrassing? You could also focus on the Federalist Papers for true literary art while you learn what the founders really thought. Now you guys can make this happen. I hope you stop focusing on the divisive material, which was mentioned in the editorials, and it can be acquired anywhere outside of school. Why would you not want to equip these students with the lesser-known materials that actually help them identify as the very special individuals-
Thank you. Please conclude your comments.
...that they are in a very special society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noah Minty. And on deck is Jody Geenan. And Mr. Minty says that you are a student in the district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
Over the last few months, several reading selections have taken fire and are under your consideration to be removed. Once again, I stand before the board in opposition of this practice. It is neither right for our students or our policies. In my previous time here, I refuted the arguments that some people have made, and I will not retread this now, especially considering that the reconsideration committees unanimously agreed that the content is not at all explicit enough to ban these books. Instead, there is another angle to consider, that being that banning these books does not coincide with the board policies, both in their original form and proposed revisions, and more importantly, what they stand for. In both Policy 362 and the draft of 361.2, heavy emphasis is placed on diversity. 362 reads, "The responsibility of the School Library Media Center is to provide materials representative of the many religious, ethnic, and cultural groups and their contributions to our American heritage." The new 361.2 reads, "Library and media center materials and resources of varying types and formats shall be selected and maintained primarily to help students understand and appreciate the cultural diversity and pluralistic nature of society in the United States and around the globe." Two of the major works in question, The 57 Bus and The Kite Runner, fall under these standards, each focusing on realistic depictions of life for diverse individuals across the world. As far back as elementary school, I, a white male American, have been surrounded by school-provided literature that acted only as a mirror, only reflecting my world and my experiences. At a young age, this was fine, but as I got older, in middle and high school, my peers and I naturally wanted to learn what things were like outside of our specific demographic. I began to branch out by reading things that my school library provided. The 57 Bus is a book that made me learn a lot about the lives of other people who are from other lifestyles, other communities, the way our justice system works, and more, all in an informative and concise novel. I checked this book out at our school library. This is the kind of experience that those policies I just quoted are intended to nurture, and banning a book like The Kite Runner or 57 Bus robs us of that opportunity. This removal shows students like me that our library is not a place where resources are provided for us to learn and feed our curiosity about the large world that we are about to be thrust into. Banning books shows us that our library is a place where the preferences of an outside force manipulate what we do and don't learn. I implore you, please do not transform our library into the puppet of political pressure. I encourage you to stick to the policy as it is and keep it as a learning place for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We move to our next speaker, which is Jody Geenan. And on deck is Joe, goodness, I'm sorry that I'm unable to read the handwriting. The, what do you think? Thank you, Mr. Vespolack. You're on deck. And Ms. Geenan, you've indicated you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
First of all, I would like to commend you for getting up and speaking. I'm always excited when I see high schoolers speak, even if they're not, even if they don't see things, you know, the same way that I see them. And I will say that we are not asking to ban books. These books would be available for any families that find them appropriate for their children at the public library, on Amazon, in different places. So we're not actually pulling it out from them. They have these opportunities still to learn these things if their parents feel that it's appropriate for them. Anyway, I am kind of piggybacking on someone else's letter, and I was going to take the second half. I'm still going to do the second half, but it might sound a little out of place because I'm starting at the first. So, anyway, the part that I'm starting on is about some of the things that we should take into consideration when we are reviewing the policies. And one of the things is, of course, violence in the book and the reaction it may cause in some students, including whether children are mature enough to handle the violence or whether some students have trauma in their background, physical and emotional abuse, poverty, foster care, adoption. The committee felt that the pages of violence, including stoning, rape, and suicide, were few compared to the length of the book. But when you're considering trauma, it shouldn't be about how much of it is in the book. If it traumatizes someone, you know, it traumatizes someone that's, I know that our teachers have some trauma training, informed training, but it doesn't sound like they've had enough that they would equate trauma with comparing it to pages in a book. In addition, there is science showing that early exposure to sexual activity can lead to pornography and addiction and mental health disorders. You've seen, I know you've seen some of the letters to the editor that talked about that. They gave you links that told you where to go to look for this stuff, and I'm sure if you did some more studies, you'd find even more stuff on that. And also, I was on the HGD Committee, so I want to remind people that that was a really long process, and we really worked things out on what was age-appropriate, what would be appropriate to be learning in school by the teachers, whether the doctors or nurses should be teaching it, whether, some of this stuff was best left for the home. And yet, whatever happened in the HGD class doesn't seem to matter in all the other classes, so I don't even know why we went through that process if the only place it counts in is the HGD class. I think we should be having some kind of policy that once we make decisions in HGD class, what's appropriate in sexual education, that it should go across the board in all of the classes. And then, parents can decide for themselves if they want to go outside of that bounds. The committee, in addition to not reviewing the age-appropriateness of the materials in question, did not even review all the materials listed on the reconsideration application. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We invite forward Joe Vespolack. Do I have it close?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. And on deck is Valerie Brissette. And Mr. Vespolack, it says you are a resident of the district. Is that correct? Very good.
Yeah. Both of my boys went through West Bend Schools.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
I guess I'm going to hold off on my comments. Just listening to people speak, this is my first time here, and I don't know the book 57, Bus Runner or Kite Runner. I know there's a lot of people that don't think it's appropriate to let our children read. I know I wouldn't let my boys read it. I hope that you consider, just consider, stuff like that doesn't need to be in our schools for our kids to see. So I'm sorry, just like I said, it's my first time. Thank you.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. We invite forward Valerie Brissette, who's going to tell me if I pronounced her name correctly, as well as on deck, Marcella Sullivan. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Brissette.
Brissette. Thank you. Ms. Brissette, you've indicated that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am.
Excellent. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I just want to say that in reference to the books that are being considered, I actually am appalled that the West Bend School District is offering inappropriate books to students that even are local library shelves for adults. Booksbooklooks.org has a label on its website for The Kite Runner, warning anyone under 18 to exit immediately because the excerpts quoted are too disturbing for minors. The 57 Bus tells our youth lies that there are more than two genders, and we can choose whatever gender we want, whenever and however often we see fit. Why can't the curriculum be truth and fact-based and uplifting in its character? Just because the 57 Bus is based on a true story, doesn't it make it truthful or a beneficial book? These books are being justified because they are books from a quote, "recommended list" for AP classes, as if students who don't read those books will not get into college or pass their AP exams. There are so many other books that have literary merit and should be considered and available to students. Common sense tells us that it's highly doubtful that if either of those two books are not read, The Kite Runner or The 57 Bus, will have a make-or-break effect on higher education pursuits. In the past, I think families have trusted that teachers and administrators have been concerned about students' education and safety. Offering vile materials, and I do consider content in these books, and I have read them even as a choice, is causing families to distrust the educators and the administrators. If we thought our school district was losing students before to other districts, to private schools, I think that inclusion of books such as these that really do add to the corruption of the minds of our youth as being part of the school curriculum certainly won't encourage families to stay in the district. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We welcome Marcella Sullivan to the podium, and Marian Rathke is on deck. And Ms. Sullivan, you've indicated that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Great. Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you so much. I'd first like to read a letter from the editor, or to the editor, written by Mary Schneider. "In the beginning, when our country was founded, our founding fathers and mothers studied the Bible and learned that there were 615 civil laws that were important to establishing a free country. They prioritized their day by first praising God and taking care of neighbors who they knew in turn would protect their families. Many today live by these same biblical principles, by standing up for our children and exposing books like The 57 Bus, that criminals rightly called a wolf in sheep's clothing. The book is the beginning of unnecessary grooming shown to lead to abuse and genital mutilation resulting in a lifetime of daily hormones. With that mindset, it seems that these days, anything goes in school district curriculums, no matter how profane, vulgar, violent, or sexual. It so seems that it is more important to defend books with explicit adult content than to protect the minds and hearts of our vulnerable youth, including having youth on the board to decide if these books are acceptable to other high school students. High school students do not have the capacity nor the emotional maturity to understand the greater meaning of their decision to accept books like these for themselves or other students, since the average age of emotional maturity for the woman is 32 and the man 43. To give children information before they are ready to put on a major decision like the acceptance of a book that would lead down the path of confusion, a lifetime of hormone use, and suicide is unconscionable. Matthew 4:4 states, 'The emotionally mature individual will use godly wisdom to direct his or her path.' We are here as free and concerned citizens to bring knowledge and hopefully understanding that will invoke wisdom, because we will not sit idly by wishing someone else to do it. Thomas Jefferson noted that the firm basis of liberty was for people to remember that liberty is a gift from God. In his Thanksgiving proclamation, George Washington stated, 'It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God and to obey His will to be grateful for His benefits and humbly implore His protection and favor.' May Almighty God protect and touch the hearts of the West Bend School District, book reconsideration committees, and school board to do what is morally best in the interest of our students of the school district. And on a personal note, I would like to add to Mary's letter. I truly don't believe that anyone in this room actually believes that our children are in a better, more safe, less divisive, less corrupt world. We all love our children, and we want what's best for them. Let us please all humble ourselves before God, take a step back, assess what we're doing to our children. Are we helping them to succeed and endure, or are we pointing them towards the path of self-destruction? Thank you so much. May Christ be praised."
Thank you. We invite forward Marian Rathke, and then on deck is Sue Kellum. Hello there. I just want to confirm here, it says that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am, and I have grandchildren in this school district.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
This means a lot to me. I'm reading a letter to the editor from Angela Traver, and this is why she has pulled her kids out of West Bend School and put them into private school. And it just goes on that she has read the articles in the news, Daily News, and viewed the reconsideration committees concerning inappropriate books being offered to students in our school district for English classes. She is very fortunate to be able to currently have her children attend private schools. And I have talked to my own daughter about considering that also, even though, you know, third grade and going into K4, these are very impressionable years, and these books aren't there yet, but what's to say in five years? We find that acceptable for those younger children. The rate we're going now, if it's in middle schools, are we going to lower that age? So as she's concerned about the books going in for these middle-school kids, and she would expect a clean, age-appropriate book only to be available to her kids while they are not under her supervision. If parents want kids to have access to that type of reading material, they can get it elsewhere. They can get it from the public libraries. The other thing that she has to say here is that that type of reading material they can get elsewhere, just like you wouldn't find a Bible in the public classrooms. I prefer the Bible being in the public classrooms. That's what we were founded on. Some people try to tell me that it will be a while before West Bend goes woke, like Milwaukee, Madison, Chicago, and other large cities, but these books tell a different story. We want to preserve our small town. We want to preserve our children. We don't want to over-sexualize them before they're too old, or before they're old enough to understand it. In addition, these students and teachers are sitting on the committees, admit that profanity is common in the schools, and that situations described in these books are the reality. The students are living in the district. I don't think reading these books such as these benefit our children. They have negative behaviors." And she writes in here, "Thank you for your time." And I appreciate your time. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, but can we just be back to the basics, reading, writing, and arithmetic? Where are our math scores for our children at this age? Our reading scores? If they can't read, how are they going to succeed? How are they going to go to work? How are they going to provide for themselves when they get older? We need to make sure that's where our focus is, and then maybe even some of the skills of not going to college, but let me learn how to weld. Let's look at shop classes, look at life skills, balancing checkbooks, all these things that we have gotten away from that we learned when we were in school. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We invite forward Sue Kellum, and on deck is Carol Hager. And Ms. Kellum, you've indicated that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am, yes.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Sue Kellum, West Bend. Earlier this spring, parents expressed concern about a book being used in West Bend School District eighth-grade English class that they felt was inappropriate. This was The 57 Bus by Joshka Slater. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. "In June, a resident of West Bend completed paperwork to challenge the school district and asked that The 57 Bus be removed from eighth-grade book club reading list. A reconsideration of Instructional Resource Committee was formed. The majority was made up of West Bend School District-"
School District employees and one Badger parent." And, by the way, on the way out the door, some of the, I was here for that reconsideration meeting, and a couple of the ladies that were on that, in that meeting, walked past us, and I heard the word "boomer." And really? That just felt bad. Okay. It seems that the school personnel on this reconsideration committee are opposed to removing the book from the English book club list because it is an optional book. Nevertheless, the book normalizes the trans agenda and asserts that gender and sexual identity can be chosen, which is very confusing. I was confused enough as a child. I didn't need this kind of, I don't know what that would have done. Profanity in the book includes 12 uses of the F-word, other words like "mother F," two I'm not going to say, content rating that would garner an R-rating if it were in a movie, or would be censored if spoken in the media. It's being offered to our youth by teachers and administrators. Were they more concerned about the LGBTQIA+ agenda than protecting minor children? I'm very happy that Superintendent Jen Wimmer saw the reconsideration in another light. I agree with her recommendation to remove The 57 Bus from the middle school and to suspend its use along with The Kite Runner until, in the curriculum, until it can be reviewed according to the updated policies that are in the works. I'm asking the school board to please vote in favor of the superintendent's recommendations. And yes, we don't need to push this kind of thing. I think this kind of thing is going to come naturally. Kids are going to ask, and I would, I would think that most parents would talk to their children. I talk to my grandchildren, too, about, you know, life issues. Why did that lady kiss that other lady? I'm not afraid to talk to them about that, and they are more aware than I was at their age, and there's nothing wrong with that. I think pushing this stuff is showing that parents can't trust the school, the people in charge, and the people in charge are kind of mistrusting the parents. That's how it feels, being out here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We invite Carol Hager to the podium, and I believe Renee Verton is on deck. Ms. Hager, just to confirm that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
I am proud to be a baby boomer, for the books that I read in high school were classical literature books. I, along with Jody Geenan, completed reconsideration of resource documents in June to ask that The 57 Bus and The Kite Runner be removed from English class reading lists, even though they were book clubs. And I can't believe here at the start of a school year, we actually started speaking about this in March, and I cannot believe that here at the start of the next school year, we are still, can't figure out what to do with the high schools' use of The 57 Bus and The Kite Runner. And I know the school board is reviewing policies regarding a selection of curriculum and books, and how books should be removed. However, I believe that the reconsideration committees were very unfair. They were composed completely of West Bend School District English teachers and administrators, including the only librarian in the district. However, one parent each also was included in each committee. This group, these groups, I should say, considered the positive and negative attributes of the books, but not whether they were appropriate for the maturity or immaturity of middle and high schoolers. I wonder if some of the teachers or administrators even served on the book selection committee that originally chose those two books. How should books be considered for English reading classes, or for social studies and science classes as well? I think we all agree there should be limited profanity and obscenities, of course. Unfortunately, a teacher on one of the committees stated that profane words are just words. Another said that the kids hear worse in the school hallways. Jody Geenan has stated well in the past, and I'll quote her, "The best way to prepare the students for choosing better language in the workplace," and I would add, "and in life, is to require that better language be used in our schools, including in the books the school district offers. West Bend should set a higher standard for its students. Books with dozens of uses of the F-bomb should definitely be excluded from consideration on any reading list, but there are worse vulgarities in books that are currently in use in ninth-grade book clubs, such as," hold on to your hats if you don't want to hear this, "97 uses of the F-bomb in one book, words like jerking off and sucking dick, other profane words such as the N-word, fag, chink, piss, pussy, tit, cock, and cunt. And I'm not even including the multiple uses of words such as ass, bitch, and goddamn that appear regularly in these ninth-grade book club reading lists. Would any of you who are parents or grandparents like to hear your children saying these words out loud, much less discussing scenes from such vulgar pieces of so-called literature? I hope not. Please, Board, please, remove these books from high school use."
Thank you. We invite forward Renee Verton, and on deck is Chris Weston. Now, first of all, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, you did.
I did. Excellent. And you're, on your card, you indicated that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm a resident.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Hi. Currently, the West Bend Schools are reviewing books, as you know, that are being offered in our schools. One of the criteria of the books is that it should reflect community values. The books being reviewed are The 57 Bus and The Kite Runner. Excuse me. Both books are currently offered at West Bend's Public Library in the adult section. And that should give pause to the school community member reviewers and the school board that these books are not suitable for schools. The excerpts that have been shared with the committee are loaded with swear words, including the F-word, as been mentioned, situations where sex and violence are depicted, and also other obscene materials. One of the committee members felt that transgender students need to be represented because they are part of the community. And I agree that all students need to be represented, but not in the manner that's presented in these books. The language and, I'm sorry, the books are filled with illicit material that does nothing to uplift persons who may question their identity, whether they are school-age persons or adults. The language and sexual situations in the books are not the standard of West Bend, Jackson, or Washington County communities. Putting this kind of reading material in this, our schools has the effect of changing community standards, and it disrespects the values of many of the students' caregivers. Although the committee members decided to keep the book as part of the curriculum, it's commendable that the superintendent decided to ask that the books be removed from the school library and the curriculum. And this is not about book banning. This is about identifying books that are age-appropriate for students, that meet the standards and values of the communities. Last, I'd like to share a personal account. Yesterday, I went to State Park, and within an hour, I saw two people wearing T-shirts that had the F-word on it, two people. And the letters for both of them were about three inches, and they were not the same message, and these people were not together. They were in different groups. But what that shows is that if you're allowing illicit graphic content as part of the school curriculum, you're contributing towards the building of feral student bodies, future workforce in society. So, I hope that you'll reconsider, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We invite forward Chris Weston, and on deck is Carrie Bone.
Hello.
Hello. Ms. Weston, you've indicated on your card that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. I'm going to be reading a letter that I wrote to the editor of the West Bend Daily News. "After reading editorials and newspaper articles about the inappropriate books in the West Bend School District, I came to the realization that I was hoodwinked by the school district years ago when I put stock into the work the state required ad hoc committee for the Human Growth and Development and Health classes. From what I remember, the committee members took great pains to clearly define boundaries for what was deemed acceptable to be taught and discussed in class with a teacher, what would be covered by the guidance of a nurse or doctor, and what would be left for the parents' guardians to discuss at home. The school district values included promoting abstinence and teaching the very basics of anatomy, purity, how the uniting of the sperm and egg creates a baby, and some STD information. All matters concerning genders, deeper questions involving sex, and matters of morals, faith, and family values were left for the family. Now I'm hearing, I'm learning, those well-established boundaries are meaningless outside of the Human Growth and Development, including in the English classes. Apparently, students could read about and discuss numerous sexualities, genders, rape scenes, vulgarities, and profanities in other classes wherein my guard was down. Shouldn't there be a school board policy that upholds decisions made regarding boundaries set forth, the health classes to extend across the board to all subjects in school? After watching the reconsideration meetings and the breeding smores sent out by the school district, it's apparent that the school district personnel no longer wish parents or guardians to trust their choices for our children. In fact, they seem to blame parents and guardians for not thoroughly researching the 30 books offered on each English book list, which are sent home throughout the year. I was very disappointed with the recommendations of the reconsideration committees. Nevertheless, my faith in the administration was somewhat restored with the superintendent's recommendations that were in disagreement with the committees. I'm urging the school board to follow the recommendations of the superintendent. Thank you."
Thank you. We invite forward Carrie Bone to the podium, and Pamela Marici is on deck. Thank you. And Ms. Bone indicates here that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
I am, correct.
Great. The next, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Okay. So, after watching the West Bend School District Committee Book Review meetings, I was very disappointed with the outcome of the middle school review. It was apparent that the committee did not actively listen to challenger Carol Hager, as evidenced by their ignoring of her objections. The review committee was stacked entirely with school district personnel plus one parent. They came to the first meeting with their minds already made up, and they never addressed any of the contentions in the final meeting except for profane language, and how they could overcome the adult maturity level by only allowing the most mature students to read it. Nevertheless, kids in school will only hear what they want to hear, too, just like the staff on the committee. With regards to the profanity, it was painful to watch the principal and assistant principals squirm uncomfortably in their chairs. They were already having a difficult time taming the profanity in the hallways. No one will ever make me believe that these books don't bring kids to the lowest denominator. It's also hard for me to believe that of the million books in the world, there aren't any that cover the issue and themes that the teachers think are so important without the vulgarity, profanity, and violence of the books in question. Carol Hager had a list of 400 good classic options. Furthermore, with all the porn addiction going on in the world and child trafficking, wouldn't it be wise to just go the extra mile to avoid the sexual influences in the books in question? Why risk triggering students who experience suicide and abuse with the stories in these books? I pray to God that the school board does their job of protecting the youth by having these books replaced with better choices.
Thank you. We invite forward Pamela Marici, and Jane Hegi is on deck.
I want to start out by saying, you said my last name very well.
Well, thank you very much.
I am impressed.
I think you are the only person in the history of my service on the school board to say so, but thank you very much. I appreciate that. I try to be respectful. Thank you. And it indicates on the card that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. The next three minutes are yours.
So, this year, I was able to take a class on the Constitution, U.S. Constitution, and Declaration of Independence. And so, this is why I wrote this. Did you know that separation of church and state is not found anywhere in the U.S. Constitution or the Declaration of Independence? It was not even recorded in the Journals of Congress during the debates drafting the First Amendment, where freedom of, not freedom from, religion is found. To the contrary, American statesmen and founding fathers, Richard Henry Lee, said Thomas Jefferson copied the Declaration of Independence from John Locke's book, The Two Treaties of Government, a book which shows a proper operation of civil government by citing the Bible over 1,500 times. In an effort for our founding fathers to try to tolerate cities at the time when cities were likely a lot more tame than they are today, Thomas Jefferson wrote to Benjamin Rush, who was a signatory of the U.S. Declaration of Independence, a physician, an educator, and delegate to the Continental Congress. I view great cities as, I'll never say, pestilential to the morals, the health, and the liberties of men. Benjamin Rush wrote back, "I agree with you in your opinion of the cities. I consider them in the same light that I do abscesses on the human body, as reservoirs of impurities of the community. Certainly, the books in the school of this city with age-inappropriate content validates their opinions. Nevertheless, I find hope, in John Hancock's words, in having secured the approval of our hearts by a faith and unwary discharge of our duty to our country. Let us joyfully leave our concerns at the hands of Him, who raises up and pulls down the empire and kingdoms of the world as He pleases. For all of those who are making efforts to protect our children in our school by trying to sleeve adult-themed books and adult, for adults instead of minors, keep the faith. God is in control." And I, oh, forget it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate, thank you for your comments. We welcome, let's see, Jane Hegi to the podium, and Mary Todd Hunter is on deck. And Ms. Hegi, it indicates on your card that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
In a previous meeting of the Book Reconsideration Committee, Carol Hager and Jody Geenan submitted a challenge to remove The Kite Runner from the West Bend High Schools. Hager and Geenan expressed concern that some students with virtually no background in religion, common these days, would consider God that Christians believe in as similar to the God that Muslims believe in, a God in many cases that would want an adulterous couple to be stoned in public. At a meeting of this board, a comment was made that stoning was mentioned in the Bible. And in Grayson Sewell's article in the Daily News, he mentions Leviticus, Chapter 20, verse 10. "In the Gospel of John in the Bible, Chapter 8, the Pharisees brought a woman caught in adultery, and placing her in the midst, they said to him, 'Jesus, teacher, this woman has been caught in the act of adultery. Now, in the law Moses commanded us to stone such women. So what do you say?' This, they said, detest him that they might have some charge to bring against him. Jesus bent down and wrote with his finger on the ground. And as they continued to ask him, he stood up and said to them, 'Let him who is without sin among you be the first to throw a stone at her.' And once more, he bent down and wrote on the ground. But when they heard it, they went away, one by one, beginning with the older ones, and Jesus was left alone with the woman standing before him. Jesus stood up and said to her, 'Woman, where are they? Has no one condemned you?' She said, 'No one, Lord.' And Jesus said, 'Neither do I condemn you. Go, and from now on, sin no more.'" That's the English Standard Version of Gospel of John. Law and gospel, rich and deep, I will never exhaust studying it, with the help and guidance of my pastors and teachers at St. John's West Bend. Sadly, many in West Bend are living without it, but that can change. Please join me. And again, please consider the age of these students, our students, at the beginning of the school year, not nine months later when they've completed that year. Nine months is a long time at that age. Thank you.
Thank you. And we welcome forward And we welcome forward Mary Todd Hunter, who is our final speaker tonight. Ms. Todd Hunter, you've indicated that you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to read the letter to the editors of our local media that a friend Nancy Fix submitted regarding books. After recently reading about an employee of McLean Elementary being arrested on suspicion of possessing child pornography, it made me wonder what steps could be taken to prevent sexual addiction in our community. And then I thought about the use of inappropriate books in our school district and wondered if we should be taking into consideration the fact that the content of the books, the Fifty Seven Boss and the Kite Runner, may have on the children being exposed to them. There can be a fine line when teaching sex to developing minds as to how and what trips the trigger for a natural sexual addiction. Our number one concern should be the welfare of our children. As the school board knows, Nancy included a couple of supporting links, one from NIH.gov regarding the Brain's Reward Centers concerning addiction and another regarding early exposure to sexual content. What has happened to our educational system that inappropriate books are being offered to minors? Let's rectify the problem and protect our children and community by shelving books with adult themes and excerpts as for adults only in our school where they belong. That's how these two books are shelved at our local public library. I pray that these deciding, those deciding on the fate of these books in our school district will use common sense in their decisions. Ultimately, the school board has the authority and duty to override recommendations of the review committees and to vote with the recommendations of the superintendent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. And that concludes our public participation portion. Thank you to all of our speakers for moving through efficiently. And with that, we'll move on with our agenda. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting and executive session. And I have my notes here, which I missed before. Beyond the minutes, we have three contracts, one resignation, no retirements, and then also an item related to the Main Street and Decorum Road easement and land acquisition. And I believe that is it for the consent agenda. Are there any questions on any items of the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Sure. So hello, John, we'll pull one then out of consent agenda. Which one would you like to discuss?
I just had a question on the land easement piece.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just wondering, is that's where the parking lot is?
Yeah, so it is on the corner. If you were coming south on Main Street, taking a right on Decorum. If you look, each of those four corners is marked out with some stakes. They're widening that curve, so it's not such a direct ninety and in essence shaving off a corner of the southeast corner of our lot.
But it's not going to dig into the sidewalk or the parking lot.
They're going to move the sidewalk back. They'll take some of our.
It didn't look like that much, but we don't have a lot of parking there anyway, so I would not have been a fan of that.
You don't lose anything. No parking, maybe a couple bushes or something like that, so.
All right. Other questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Melanie, motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move now to reports, and we'll start with our Curriculum Committee report. And Melanie Ergot, the committee chair for that committee, will give the report. Thank you.
Okay. So the Curriculum Committee met on August fifteenth. We had an update from Emily Melstrand on updates to the social emotional learning curriculum for the digital platform. The main adjustments were just to make it more user-friendly for the teachers. There were also just a few modifications on some lessons, like maybe they revised a handout or made the language more clear on something, just to help students understand more. It was all pretty benign. It was just really, I think it was part of an original piece that the board wanted updates on that as changes were made. So then Dr. Quinn Trueblood, our new program, or our new director of curriculum, that was her first meeting, and as well as a new program administrator, Heather Isaacson. And there will also be another curriculum coordinator that will be joining the team pretty soon here. But they kind of went over their vision moving forward. They're kind of rebuilding the whole little department over there, so. But it's to be more visible, create clarity, and determine the focus for the district. They identified four priorities that were assessing the present state of the department, defining the roles and responsibilities for each member, designing a service model for stakeholders, and launching a new curriculum and instruction district website. Dr. Trueblood wanted to have, you know, note the importance and value of making access to the curriculum available to all stakeholders and just to include curriculum maps, pacing guides, and other unit plans. We also went over a preliminary review of the twenty twenty-three Wisconsin Act Twenty, which drew attention to applying the science of reading and requires intervention for students not reading at grade level by the end of third grade. The law is to be fully implemented by the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, and so the action timelines may be adjusted by the newly formed Office of Literacy and the Council of Early Literacy Curricula within the Department of Public Instruction. And just basically to kind of set up a, develop an implementation plan focused on, you know, promoting that. And then also, we kind of went over that a lot of the teachers enrolled in professional development this summer, with over a hundred and twenty teacher staff took part in that. And so that was just great to see the participation there.
Great. Any questions for Melanie on the activities in the Curriculum Committee? Thank you for your work and to all the committee members for that. Next is the Policy Committee report, and I will supply that report. The Policy Committee last met on August twenty-second. And just to recap for the board, the Policy Committee's been going through an initial cycle of review for the policies, and we look forward to kind of settling into a more consistent review cycle going forward. At our meeting, we reviewed several things, annual notices for our families in district. They can be found in our student family handbook, as well as the public and annual notice section on our website. We also looked at policies around board member authority, board committees, transportation, and tax incremental finance policies. In June, thank you for your suggestion, we took a look at Policy Eight Eighty, and that is, and you had suggested language, including language regarding first responders. And so you'll see later on the agenda tonight, for a second reading, we have included that language. So we'll look forward to your feedback on that. And then our next committee meeting is going to include a collection of various series, and also, we're going to be bringing back the instructional material policies that are being advanced for action tonight. And just as a reminder to the board, and we've talked about this as we've gone along, we intend for that, those instructional materials, collection of policies, to go through this iterative process. We discussed the idea of, do we wait for the policy, so to speak, to be perfect before we make changes, or can we make some changes, we agree to kind of advance the football down the field in an iterative process? And that's the approach that we've been taking. So we will see those policies again, first of all, as part of the Policy Committee, the Curriculum Committee will also see it, and then, of course, the upcoming work session. So more work to come there. I'll pause to see if my fellow committee members have everything, anything to add. Otherwise, that would conclude my report. Any questions or updates? Thank you. We'll turn it then to Superintendent Wimmer for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. A lot of discussion this evening around books, and the update recall, our last discussion with the board is readying for a work session on September seventh. So there's no specific action around a recommendation. It's that we're in process on policy language and procedures and ensuring that all those have timely review before they are taught the book club books in our classrooms for this year. So again, just thank you for everyone who continues to provide feedback. We're also looking at the policy and practice around reconsideration. We hear a lot about that piece. That was a decade-old policy that we're following, needed to follow, but we are reaching out around what revisions of what that could like, look like. So again, while a lot of our discussion is centered around two titles, specifically, the board is taking a more comprehensive approach around that, around what is the policy language that's going to guide us, what will the practices that help us review those materials, and how we can take another look at what's in our classrooms as a team so that we can move forward. So that's kind of the status of those pieces. So again, a work session specifically September seventh, two weeks, not this Thursday, next Thursday, around that topic for our board. It's a really busy week this week. We welcome back our staff, formerly our certified staff, tomorrow, so they'll kick off. They've had floating workdays in their classrooms, in their schools, so lots of planning, professional development. You know, if you know teachers, you know, they've probably been in their rooms all summer. You know, the one time we kick them out is when we're waxing the floor, and they probably can't hardly stand it. But classrooms have been already welcoming people with different jumpstart events, things of that nature. So it'll be great to have everyone back. Reminder that everyone has a meet and greet event Wednesday, August thirtieth, in the evening, and our freshmen are invited to East and West for a mini day, August thirtieth as well. So that'll include tours of building, pep rally, all sorts of great transition events. I want to say that that is two years old, that event, two or three. And again, led by our crew, which is student mentors. So over a hundred and twenty students volunteer to be part of that program to help support the transition of their fellow peers. So very excited about that. Also, August thirtieth, Dr. Ross Green is presenting in the community. He's a renowned clinical psychologist. He has a public parent family forum event at six P.M. at the high school Silver Lining Arts Center. And then everything is leading up to the big first day for students. So after kind of a burst of activity with staff this week, everyone will have a long weekend. Tuesday, September fifth, is kindergarten through twelfth grade first day, and then four K starts the week thereafter. So we couldn't be more excited to welcome back staff and our students, but I would be remiss if I didn't share our gratitude for everyone who's working on the backend, buildings, grounds, maintenance, technology, to make sure rooms and campuses are ready. So a thank you to them. A thank you in advance to our food service, because I know that they're providing breakfast for all staff for our kickoff. So just thank you to everyone who behind the scenes is making things happen. Speaking of making things happen, our students are doing that. East and West High Schools earned recognition for high participation and achievement on their advanced placement exams. So both of the schools, we were notified, achieved Level Two, which now we're excited because we've got our sites on Level One, of course, for the Advanced Placement Pay Setter Awards given by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. So that means that twenty percent or more of all students in East and West participated in at least one AP exam. Sixty-five percent or more of those students earned exam scores of a three or above. And why that's important, AP exams of three or above earn college credit. So for our students, it's a great investment in rigorous coursework that earns them college credit without the college cost. So very, very excited for that. So again, anyone who earns a three or five, on that five being the highest, has that accessible. So congratulations to our students for their participation. Congratulations to the staff who make those opportunities available and make sure that our kids are learning at that high level. Talking about welcoming our new staff, we had a lot of new staff join us on a fantastic bus tour. So as part of their onboarding, if you're new to the district, even if you're a veteran staff member, or veteran educator, but new to our district, we've got some days for onboarding and welcoming and getting to know people and getting to know our different schools, whether they serve there or not. So they were led on a fabulous bus tour of every school and the communities that they'll be serving, and it was really great. Principals did an amazing job. They got the kind of text ahead of time, we're nearing your campus. You know, there was one site that had, all the kids were out and cheering them on to welcome them, you know, quick tours. So it was really a great event. They had done that in the past, but it had been paused for a while, so it was great to see that back. But I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the businesses that supported that event and made our new faculty feel so welcome. They had swag bags of, whether it was just come visit us, here's a coupon, or some freebies. The Beat Goes On, Candyman on Main, Eaton's Fresh Pizza, Kettle Marine YMCA, Moa, Stingers Golf and Recreation, the Orville and Norbert, the Town Heritage Center, and West Bend Area Chambers of Commerce really helped us make that an event, not just about our school district, but also about our community. So just a thank you to those business partners as well. And just one plug for Fall Athletics. They've started, even though the school year hasn't. Our football games are in swing. We've got golf, swimming, diving, volleyball. All ticketing is cashless, so you can go right online, or we'll help you out at the gate. But when you're looking for something to do in the community, remember and think of cheering on our students. We'd appreciate it. That's all I have for my report tonight.
Superintendent Wimmer, just touching on one of the last items that you spoke about, I know a number of community members said, what do we do with student athletes when it's so hot? Right? Can you talk about that a little bit? Because it was hot and humid.
Sure. It was very hot and humid. So we analyze weather. It's not just snow days, but we're also looking at heat advisories. So some of our buildings, you know, don't have air conditioning, but we might be hosting programs, things of that nature. But also, your athletes are outside, your turf is going to run, you know, sometimes that turf is a hundred and twenty degrees when you step foot on it. So the WIAA, Wisconsin Athletic Association, really oversees and provides some guidelines for everyone, so it can't be unfair competition going, oh, I'm going to bear the heat, and this one's not. They really set some guidelines for all. We also have athletic trainers on staff who help guide and look for, again, safety of our students during extreme heat. And two, we also looked and closed campuses. So any outside agency that was either a nonprofit, they might be using our campuses, all your youth teams, things of that nature, we proactively closed our campuses to them, citing the heat would be extreme. A lot of our athletes were able to move indoors, whether it was lifting weights, reviewing film, volleyball is already indoors. They make accommodations so kids can have opportunities, but we don't go outside during that extreme heat either.
I have a follow-up question, well, not on that, not on that topic, but I'll pause. Does anyone else have questions? All I want to do is just to reiterate where you, I asked where you ended, now where you started with regard to, with regard to curriculum. So just to clarify, you had given this board a recommendation, and according to my read of the policy, it doesn't require board action. That is the recommendation that stands unless we choose a different course of action.
Correct. So at our last discussion, we talked about that we're already in play, in process through both our Curriculum Committee, our Policy Committee, and the upcoming board work session. So that stands until we move through that work and the board directs otherwise. Again, we're looking at totality beyond just two titles and how they might impact, but also just the larger scope of policy practice and all of those things in context. So you're correct. So that's, that's why there's no formalized ask for action around that. We know that we're in play right now on that. So that just holds until we get through that work session specifically.
Other questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right. Thank you. We move then to our discussion items. First discussion item is construction manager recommendation. And Superintendent Wimmer, I think you and Mr. Harder are perhaps going to walk us through this item?
Correct. I'll let Mr. Harder lead us. He stepped into some facilities and is working in that department, and we might tag team a little bit together.
All right. Good evening, board members. So this evening, we want to provide you an update on the process we're at in analyzing our facilities and our assessment. And specifically tonight, talk about the role of a construction manager and what that would bring us as part of our process as we move forward. So where we've been at, as you remember, if you look back, in June, the district selected the EUA, Epstein UN Architects, for a facilities assessment and recommendations for the West Bend School District. That team has been in, along with the facilities team here. They have toured every single building in places many people never ever get to see or go, taking numerous photos, condition reports. They've also been provided with a wealth of documents and statistics that we have here on house about all of our facilities and our equipment. And so that team and their engineers have started the process of analyzing their walkthroughs. We had our first meeting with them a couple weeks ago, just to give us a high level of a couple things that they have found and how their report will eventually come forward is what that may look like. Their next step really will be to come back in September and visit our schools again. And the purpose of that is, is really to see the building when it's in use as an education facility. So in summer, you may hit a building, and they may have hit summer school at Green Tree, but that's not how our day operates normally at Green Tree. Silverbrook has summer school, the high school. They want to see our buildings being used full capacity every day. So they will spend two to three, maybe four hours at our high school touring each one of our sites, talking to our principals and a team of teachers there, along with us here at the district office as we go through. And they'll really be looking at that educational usage of the space, what's working and what's not working at that point in time. And so that brings us to today, where we're looking for that second partner in this process. And that is what's called a construction manager. And so that construction manager is going to help us with a variety of different things as we move forward. And the first one is really that accurate and cost estimates. And so as the architects start to look at solutions or possible ideas, and as we work here as a leadership team in conjunction with them, the construction manager's job is to take, hey, this idea in reality costs you X amount of dollars. And so they're there to use their extensive knowledge of working with subcontractors, self-performed work, so that's work that they may do on an entire project, to be able to give us a real number as to what that may cost if you were to move forward with that project. And so they have numerous projects that they have built, both for educational institutions, commercial institutions, a variety of subcontractors that they can try to get us real accurate costs on equipment, building, labor, all of those different types of pieces as we go forward. And really to find the most economical and efficient way to carry out whatever solutions are provided to us by that architectural team at that point in time. And so that's the first piece that they bring to the table for us. The second piece is really looking at, can we construct this? What is the best way to do this? What are your long-term concerns? So through the RFP process, one of the things we asked about is, so if you were to renovate a space or you build a new building, you then have to start the entire facilities management process over in your replacement cycles. What does that look at five years? What does that look at 10 years? Is this solution more cost-effective than this solution at the 10-year mark? And they will work through that pieces and that constructability on our land, what we have accessible to us, if it's a remodel, et cetera, at that point in time, and really start to help us understand the life cycle of that building as presented by the architects. The next area is, is if you're doing any sort of construction that involves remodeling. So I'll use the last project of Silverbrook. That was a phased project, where they would finish a portion of the space. A group of students would move into that space, then they would go ahead and they would remodel or work on that previous space. A construction manager will take the solutions that are presented and look at a phasing schedule from the ability to construct that. What does that look like for the safety features while school is in session, for our students, our staff, our parents, whoever comes to visit our facilities? Identify issues that we may have and do that, and make recommendations of what we could do off school times versus during school times at that point in time. And so depending upon the scope of that project and what you're doing, that phasing schedule can look differently. And they would be able to provide those conversations for us upfront, related to any of those proposals that would be put forth for consideration by the district at that time. The next area where they help us is around community engagement and communication support. It's through transparency of what it is, what each solution means, what it looks like in the sense of what does that mean if we were to redo this building or if we were to build a new building? And so they work with a team here at the district, the architectural team, to communicate all aspects of what is happening at the beginning of a project, all the way through the end of the project, if there is a project that is selected and moved forward. And they are part of that communication team that would work with Ms. Wimmer, along with Ms. Kunkler here, to be transparent to the community and answer those questions, along with the team here at that point in time. So each of the firms that we looked at have staff who can support that process and have worked with other school districts at that point in time, and also with commercial people and so forth as they move forward. So when you look at this, the last piece is really to get collaborative. Their job is to pull everything together. It's allowing them to pull aspects for our students and our parents and our community, along with keeping our buildings going if we're doing a remodel, working with the community to understand the questions and the issues that may arise as the architects start to develop solutions or potential solutions to things here. They can really come in and describe what that would mean in terms of the construction phasing in the future for us and be part of that, in essence, the third part of the wheel. You have the district, you have the architects, and the construction manager really becomes the third part of that stool to help us go forward and complete that wheel.
In addition to one of those pieces that we've talked through is that lead times and being really in tune with the cost of materials and the intense rise that they've had, the fluctuation that they've had, and really, again, kind of boots on the ground around understanding the nuance of that. Because we know, we've had a failed referendum in 2019. We know the status of our buildings now. We know that there's some large-scale projects that need to be done. We've talked about, you know, that new building for Jackson Elementary. So when we engage and bring on a partner like this, it's really another layer of expertise, another layer of transparency around all the different costs. And really, something that we, when we put together that facilities assessment and look at what our options are, we can be confident in that projection. Because if we were looking at anything, we know that we're years away from that in any kind of plan or phasing. So we really, again, that's almost like you said, the third leg of the stool.
Yep, and that's pretty common right now. We talked through a lot of that process of predicting out, what does inflation look like? The lead times, we're hearing certain types of electrical, switch gears 36 months. What does that look like in some cases? How do you find that right piece of equipment? And so the district started this process in June of trying to find that partner. So RFP was distributed to multiple firms. We initially had five firms who responded to the district. As we started the process, we opened a walkthrough opportunity through the high school. We received numerous questions about that building, just because it's so large. The mechanicals in that building have some very different distinct things compared to the rest of our buildings, along with the age. And so some of the firms walked through there. And prior to setting up our interview schedule, we did have one firm that backed out of the process due to the fact that they were just awarded another large contract with another entity, and they could not do justice with us and our project, along with that one at the same time. So they recognized upfront, they didn't have the staff to support what we needed here in our process. At that point in time, we interviewed four firms, of which that time, the team there used our rubric and we narrowed it down to three. We then asked for additional questions following up from those three firms. And the team has reviewed it or narrowed it down now to two current finalists for us. One is Findorf and the other one is Myron. We are still engaging with both of those firms and asking additional questions, along with the fact that we are continuing the process of reaching out to reference checks and current projects that they may also be involved in. So their reference checks that they provide, but if they are currently building in another district across the state within the last couple of years, we've used our team of people here to reach out and ask similar questions to what Ms. Wimmer was talking about. What was your experience? Talk about the budgeting and estimating and costing and all of those types of pieces. And really, that's kind of where we are at. As we go forward for the board and for the community to understand this, our hope is in September to bring forth a recommendation for you and a contract. And so as we look at costs and considerations of a construction manager, there's multiple phases of this. The first one is what they would categorize in the industry as pre-referendum services. That's every service up to the point of the day if the district were to choose to go to referendum. Our two finalists are not charging an upfront fee for referendum services. And so it's at zero cost to the district unless we were to go all the way through, have a approved referendum and the district chooses to go with a different construction manager at that point in time. Typically, the process is whoever you select at the beginning ends up being your construction manager. But if there are issues throughout the process, that is the only time where they would look to then recoup their costs if we were to part ways at that point in time. But if the district were to go through the process and go to referendum, there is no cost for the pre-referendum services. If we go through the process and say, "We're not going to go to referendum," there is no cost to us at that point in time. If we go to referendum and it's a failed referendum, there would also be no cost to the district with both of our finalists at that point in time. We also often get asked, "How does a construction manager get paid? How does that look like?" And so the biggest piece of what we're looking at in the RFP is the services that they provide. And they will do a percentage of the overall project cost. So I have a hypothetical project. We used a $50 million hypothetical project across three school locations for our RFP process. For example, if their project fee as a construction manager was 1.25%, they would get $625,000 for the construction management portion of that. That's a hypothetical project. That's all determined on, that fee is all determined on the scope if we move forward with a project. So the higher the number, the more the fee goes up, the less the number goes down. However, if you do get below $45 million, there is a sliding scale that the fee typically slides up a little bit as the smaller the project gets at that point in time. Other costs that you would see related to a construction project is if you pass and you do go, you pass that referendum and you go on, that would go back to that construction manager, includes staffing needs based upon the individual project that you may see. Equipment rental costs, self-performed work. So most construction managers have the ability to self-perform work, such as carpentry, masonry, site work, et cetera, whatever it might be. They would bid on that process just like a subcontractor would. And so they put a bid in, just like XYZ company does over here, and then bids are looked at at the district at that point in time. And so they have to bid that. They aren't just automatically saying, "Yep, we do masonry and we get that project here." They follow the same exact bid process as everybody else. Change order fees, site items such as a job trailer, temporary heat, et cetera, are the other fees and costs that may go into a project if you were to get to the referendum project at that point in time. So our goal would be to come back in September with a recommendation for you, to be able to find that other part to our team as we move through this process. I'll answer any questions you have on the construction manager piece, what that means, what that looks like for us as a district. It'll be to myself or Ms. Wimmer.
I have some questions.
John, go ahead.
So we have awarded a architect team to do an analysis of the district, right?
That's correct.
Have they given us, you know, what their recommendations are for moving forward?
Not yet at this point in time. So they just did the structural analysis, the map, the mechanicals, the electrical, plumbing, all of those types of things. They are currently pouring through all of that data. So it took them, I want to say, about a week to walk through all of our buildings with a team of like three or four. They have thousands and thousands of photos and documents. They will work to bring something back this fall on that, Mr. Donaldson, and some recommendations and some areas of concerns or areas to discuss as we go forward. They will also bring that back after they have an opportunity to do the educational walkthrough at the same time, so they can bring both pieces back to this team here in the community.
So, but you're talking about having a solution or a choice for a project manager or the construction manager or general contractor, if you will, whatever you want to call it, in September.
Yep, we would like them to...
They're also costing the findings of the architect. So if the analysis that they're bringing forward, it's nice when you bring their report forward. We anticipate that November, but they'll meet with the board prior. They cost all their findings. So not design, build, or a project, but they're the independent kind of person at the table that is going to cost all their findings. So when the architect says...
You're talking about the construction. I understand what a general contractor does, coming from that line of business for a long time. But we're talking about possibly, you know, picking one of these two without getting, you know, basically bids from both of them, you know?
We have, so we have. So that bid package that they put together, Mr. Donaldson, includes the pre-referendum fee?
But we don't even have recommendations from the architect team yet.
Yep, so it's a percentage fee. So matter who we pick, they are proposing a percentage fee on any solution that the district would choose to go forward at that point in time.
So this is specifically who we're going to pay to manage the construction project?
And it would also be then whoever your construction manager is if...
Because I guess I would like to see taking in effect, in account, who can do the work and what kind of discounts they're going to give us for the work to add it on to the package. You know, if Myron can do more of the work that they're going to actually propose that we need than Findorf, then I would say, you know, that's something that we can take in consideration when we're picking a project manager, instead of just saying, "Hey, we're going to pick one of these project managers and hope for the best after we get our recommendations from the architects." Because we have no idea yet.
No, so correct. So both of the firms that are finalists have the ability to self-perform. But what we hold them accountable to, even though they have that ability, they have to still bid out those pieces. So you might have those companies who, either one, where they would bid out, you know, you know, there's often multiple packages on something. They might be awarded the concrete work, but not the electrical. They might get this, but you want healthy competition all the way through to keep driving our costs down. So they would be invited to bid just alongside anyone else so that we could review some healthy competition in the market all the way through.
And I would also, I would also say, I would like to, I would like to suggest to, you know, discuss what they're, what they're, what they're increasing the cost of materials by. I mean, obviously, they have to handle them, but there should be, you know, you should be able to determine how much they're going to upcharge us for lumber or materials, you know, bricks, whatever they're going to charge us for. I mean, you get the, you know, $50,000 bill for lumber and then they take another $25,000 on top of it. You know, we should be able to cap that somewhere. And I think that should be all something that we should look at if no one is looking at it right now.
So we've engaged them in conversations about general conditions. We also have the ability in the state of Wisconsin, and I'm going to look, Mr. Sarnell's back there. The law changed. Previously, we would have to buy some materials to do sales tax-free. We now have the ability to give them our sales tax, so each one of those partners look in that. So we've already had conversations with them around general conditions and markup in terms of what that is. But as Ms. Wimmer said, they're going to bid on everything. That construction management fee is purely that general contractor portion of that. And I've seen it both ways and talked to Mr. Ross before he left, where the CM does not win the contract for the masonry or the electrical, or whatever they're able to self-perform, the carpentry, because they weren't the low bid at that point in time or couldn't handle the scope of the project.
Yep, I understand that. I just think, I think we're, I think we, you know, are moving a little fast on this because we're talking about a, you know, potentially huge referendum that I don't think anyone's going to be in favor for. I'm not going to be in favor for, especially a district when we have zero debt right now and we could potentially save for it in a few years and pay it for cash. I mean, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me why we're kind of moving this fast. I understand the architect, we need to know what the plan is. But we also need to compare it to the architectural plan that the community did for us for free years back and see what the difference is and see where, see what was lacking, you know, see where we're actually, you know, maybe make some changes compared to the new one and just see what the differences are. And then we're talking about, you know, adding a construction manager at a, you know, substantial fee. I mean, this is, you know, obviously, this is hypothetical, but we don't even have a plan yet. And like I said, this is a district that we just got rid of the debt and I think we can save for it. And I think we're moving a little fast to start thinking about adding a construction manager for projects that we could potentially, you know, not have to take a referendum for and dig into the pockets of the taxpayers anymore. So that's my two cents. I think we're, I'm not going to be in favor to approve anybody in the near future until I get to see, you know, comparatives between what's actually needed in a plan from an architect and then see what we're actually potentially going to be needing for a construction manager. I mean, I think it's only safe to get the full scope of what the project's going to be before we actually say, "Yep, we're going to approve a, you know, million-dollar contract for a construction manager." And then, "Oh, we can't even afford to do the work though, because no one's going to do the work." It just seems like we're moving a little fast. We don't have things in order yet.
Is this binding?
So you would look at a project, if you were to go to a contract with this company, you would use a standard contract, it would be them, that is if, if a referendum were to pass, they would be awarded to them at that point in time as the construction manager.
If we don't select a construction manager at this stage, does it delay the progress?
We would have to struggle with the costing piece of it. So when the architects say, "These are your solutions," the construction management team will have a much deeper knowledge of what that actually costs, what current labor is handling, lead times and all of those things. So it's, to us, it's the check and balance of the architect at that point in time. And if we went as far as, Dr. Fenn, we went as far as saying, "Hey, we did all the study. We don't like any of these solutions. We're not going to referendum." We would owe them nothing at this point in time.
So even if we pick a construction manager and then decide not to go to referendum?
Yep, there's no cost. Yep, the only cost comes in is that they are then our construction manager if a referendum is brought forth and approved.
So the benefit is we have someone to help advance the architectural planning because we have someone doing costing. The downside would be that if we do move to referendum and it passes, that's then who we're obligated to go with moving forward.
Yep, unless we were to separate those and go back out to bid just for a costing piece. But that's the typical progression through the construction process where there is less cost upfront. They're taking a chance on the fact that somebody would, if you pass a referendum, that fee in there, you're with the team for the two to three-year process at that point.
But at this point, no cost if we decide not to move forward.
Till a referendum would be moved forward and passed.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can just follow up. So one of the services, talk about kind of the construction management and the architecture review. I'm familiar with the term called value engineering. I'm not sure if that's what we're talking about here or not. We've used a similar concept in some of our larger construction projects at our headquarters, where the architect comes in and lays it out and says it's going to cost a certain amount of money. And then we have an individual, and I couldn't remember if it's called this or not, but a construction manager who will look at the plans and say, "You know, the architect put in this nice curved wall that looks beautiful, but you know what? If you go with a straight wall, you're going to save 100 grand." So that's the check and balance. Without that, we'd be looking at the architecture plans without understanding of, is this right? Is this wrong? You know, or they'd say, "Look, you've got, I'm making this up, this fixture made of solid marble. You know what? You can use a synthetic material and save $75,000." And that's really kind of what we're looking...
Some of that will come at pre, right? So some of it down to some of those specific needs. So some of it down to some of those specific details. If a project were to pass, that's where you continue that value engineering, that value piece that a construction manager will bid. That was even one of the questions we asked is how do you handle that conflict between the architect who wants this? And this is the cheaper or better or more sustainable version at that point in time. That's where that, you know, that constructability aspect of the pieces that we, you know, I shared, that's really where that CM can say, yeah, this is a better solution or have you thought of X, Y, Z? It's that back and forth piece between those two expert fields along with us that can ask those questions.
Well, and given the cost of materials, I think we were talking about that before. I think that's going to be very, whatever approach we take, it's going to be very important for us to, to look at because that could be a big cost savings.
Yep.
John, I think, did you have another comment? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine. I guess, I guess, you know, with the discussion and, you know, ethically speaking, if we're not even planning on going to referendum or that's kind of like leading somebody on to do the work and not paying them, you know, to me. Especially, like I said, I wouldn't be in favor of doing that. I mean, I would not feel right saying, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and hire these guys, get a bunch of free work out of them and then just not go to referendum because we're going to save for it for another five years anyways. I mean, that's just me. I don't know if anybody else cares that much about a, you know, yeah, maybe it's a large company and they got the money to spend, but, you know, I guess I would feel better about it, you know, ethically and morally if we were to say, hey, we're going to give you a specific amount that we can put in the budget and say this, we want, we want the, your, your work done on this work with the architect. I mean, I'd feel better about that than saying, let's go ahead and sign with this company. Let's get, you know, if we're going to pick one, let's give them a, let's rethink how we're going to do this then. Because we might not go to referendum. I mean, you're, you're leading, yes, it's a company, a big company, but you're potentially leading them on for something I would never, I would never be, you know, on board with approving a referendum myself. Not, not like I said, with the state that we're in, zero debt and we can save for it. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I think Mr. Donaldson has a point. I, and I'd be curious if this construction manager, you know, understands or has experience that sometimes these referendums move forward and sometimes the referendums do not.
That was a specific question I asked both finalists today of, if we go through this whole process and, you know, whenever we're done, the board chooses not to advance a question, there would be no cost to us. They're very aware of that. They're very aware that if we would go to referendum and there's a failed referendum, that there is no cost to us at that point in time. It would only be if we chose to, if a referendum were to advance and we chose to go a different direction after doing all of that work, that they would then seek fees at that point in time.
So just to clarify, just, John, on your question, so are you, if you're saying save for it and potentially pay cash for it in five years or something like that, what are your thoughts on how we're going to manage facilities for the next five years with the current needs?
We currently have the budget set for it right now. No, we're, we're basically out of debt so we can save more than we need to or, you know, more than we have been in the past. And I think the budget will allow for an increased amount of, you know, of maintenance on it. And if it takes us 10 years to do it, then it takes us 10 years to do it. But you know what? I don't think, you know, in the state of the world that we're in now, taking a $50 million referendum, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me in the, in the position the district's in to have no debt and be able to save for it. I mean, we've seen some of the numbers and some of the potentials of, you know, a five to seven year savings and it's, it's huge. We can pay for some of this stuff up, you know, out of pocket and not have to take, you know, a interest rated, you know, debt on top of the, on top of the community, so.
So if these are potentially three-year projects, if you will, roughly, like if we decided to move forward three years potentially for completion or something like that, and we don't look into starting that process for up to five years, I mean, you're, so you're comfortable with the facilities the way they are for, you're suggesting for potentially eight years?
No.
Like facilities like Jackson can continue as is?
No, I think Jackson is a priority. And I think, right, we don't even have, we don't have any of the architectural information on what they want to do. And I think before we have that, and if, and if Jackson was the priority of, hey, we're going, we need this new school, I mean, that can be a different thing. But it's a failed referendum before and I think in a couple of years, we can pay for Jackson. And if that means, yes, we have a year and a half or something that we can be saving two years and then start the project and by year five, when it's done or whatever it is, then we still have the money for it. I mean, that, that just makes more sense to me.
I think there'd be a really good follow-up discussion for the board to talk about, as you're saying, some of the wider scope of the financials, how we're positioned, if we're looking at that piece. We could easily do that as a follow-up. I don't want to creep into that on this agenda item specifically. Keep it more to that. I think we can go back and ask a couple ways. We're not asking, we ask specifically for discussion, so we appreciate the feedback from the board. You're asking around, you know what? I'd rather have a straight contract where I don't owe you anything, you don't feel like you're losing, what's that look like? I want you to come in and just give me clean cost estimates. Are they interested? Would they be willing to do that? We can ask that for a follow-up.
I mean, we can always take that, you know, we can write it up in a way that if, if it does go to referendum, then it comes off the top, you know, whatever their fee would be anyways. I just, I don't, I don't feel, like I said, I don't feel good about that of giving somebody a false hope that they're going to do a bunch of free work for us and we're going to, it doesn't, wouldn't make me feel, you know, I wouldn't feel good about that going home and be like, oh, we got them, you know, we got them good, we got them on free work and it just isn't right.
Yeah, and again, any other feedback questions? It might not come to you right now, you might need a little bit to kind of think about. It's not an action item for tonight, but it is, you know, presenting a pathway. And as I said, I'm, I can't put anything in front of this community that I've had, that I haven't had someone with expertise in the field looking at and understanding the costs associated. And as we've said, the costs of inflation, the projections, someone really truly in the market around scope of work.
Yeah, and I certainly understand your sentiment about trying to get free work out of them, knowing that we wouldn't do anything if that were the case. I don't know, I don't know that, if that we wouldn't do anything. I mean, we have different opinions on that, but I, but I mean, my question is, what I would want to make sure before I would consider moving this forward or not is just to make sure that it's definitely an eyes wide open on their end of things. It sounds like it is to me based on what you're saying, because I agree ethically, I'm not looking to dupe anybody into that, but I mean, I think that's how this business works is that it's a risk. They basically have said, we're willing to take it. That's why they made it this far into the process and we're willing to do the work because if we get the project, it's a big win for us. And if we don't get the project, we understand that's the cost of business.
And there are some firms who will put in a fee for this service, even if you go to referendum, if you don't recoup that. Mr. Donaldson, to your question, even if we saved at that point, we would need, as Ms. Wimmer said, we would want that construction manager-
I understand that.
That we can do the cost.
I don't think we have someone that can, you know, at our district equipped to handle a large project like that.
You get into MAP and all that kind of stuff, absolutely.
I mean, because, yeah, you're paying for the connections to every other contractor that they have and everything else. I understand that. But, I mean, I also would like to see, you know, potential, you know, what the architect might have for different phases. I mean, if this is, hey, this is what we would suggest as the minimum and this is what we would like to see, you know, I don't know if we're planning on something like that, but that could potentially be a completely different conversation than if, hey, we need to get all this done for, you know, just to get everything back up to code and safe for students and comfortable for staff and students and whatever it is, then, then that's a different conversation. If it's, you know, if it's something small like that, that we can, we can get somebody on, on, you know, faster and get it moving and push off some of the other stuff because, like I said, $50 million, I just don't, I would, I would never feel comfortable asking the community to fork over $50 million for referendum, especially where we're at.
Now, just to clarify, that $50 million number was hypothetical.
It's hypothetical. I'm just saying.
I just want to be sure with the sound bites that there's a $50 million contract.
If they say we need a new school, we need, we need a remodel, that's going to add up pretty fast.
Yeah.
And it couldn't be that pretty quick.
That's true.
Yep. Other pieces of feedback, anybody?
Melanie, it looked like you were reaching for your microphone.
Yeah, I mean, I think Chad touched on that, but obviously, this is a risk that they've taken before. They have, you know, policies or procedures in place for this, so it's not like anybody's pulling the wool over their eyes and, you know, yeah, I just wanted to-
This is good discussion.
Knowing their finalists, I'm sure they're watching the discussion as well.
They probably are.
I'm sure they'll, they'll want to be following up and speaking to many of the things that you're bringing up.
We appreciate you bringing this forward discussions that we can give, give our feedback. So we'll take that into consideration. May we see, may we see an item on the next, on the next agenda?
I just have one more question. Do we, have we done any background on the two companies as far as, do we have connections to, from the companies into the district somewhere?
Yes, so we started before we even let them be considered as finalists. We went back and we started calling our job alikes. I made calls to superintendents, Tim's calling to other facilities, who's got what in play, beyond what they're bringing for the interview process and all of that, because they certainly have a portfolio of work. But then we asked for everything and we cold call as well, not just their. So we started that process too.
I mean, I mean, as far as like, you know, is anybody getting a favor because someone, you know, is connected to this district somehow with these two? I'm just, I just want to play it, you know, ethically and-
Sure, yeah, I mean, if you're asking if people know them?
Yep.
Yeah, I know the Myron firm, they were on one of my projects, but-
But you're not like related to-
No, no.
I'm, I'm saying like that, you know, is there like somebody, okay.
No, we can, we can ask for those connections as part of process, but, you know, if the board privately can disclose if you're connected somehow to any one of these companies, let us know about.
I'm not either, but I understand, I understand the question.
I just have one.
Yes, Kurt.
Who's, is the architect asking for us to have a construction manager right now or are we asking as a-
It comes in the process. It's about the time to get this all squirted away in a contract so that if they are bringing back solutions on that timeframe of November, we have somebody who can start to put numbers to that and is onboarded. They're going to do some of that, hey, they did this facility's condition assessment, they may want to walk through and checks and balances that also.
We're asking?
Yep, we are asking. So we want them on board so when we get that process of, here's some solutions, we're not just trusting their dollars, we actually have some more in-depth industry knowledge to balance that up at that point in time.
Thank you. We appreciate you bringing it forward. All right. We move then to our next discussion item, which are policies for second reading. Superintendent Wimmer, I think you're going to walk us through.
So remember, we were playing with a little format. So this is a different format. Instead of every single individual one requiring every single, we're, we put kind of click for the list so people would be routed. And we continued to chunk them, you know, what's new, what's for review, what's for removal, what's for revision. So it's a little bit different view than last time. So just, again, take a look at the two and feel free to give Mr. Swigert, President Swigert and I, feedback. But I think this is a little bit easier to understand even for the public around what we're looking at, what's new. The only changes from our first reading, you noted during the policy committee report, was the addition in 880 relations with community organizations in that second paragraph, leading with and including first responders and medical personnel in addition to law enforcement. Other than that, there were no changes.
Any questions on any of, any of these? So again, the only change was to 880. Otherwise, these are consistent with what was presented at the prior meeting, correct?
Correct.
So we have a few choices. One, if I remember correctly, any on second reading?
I didn't list it as a potential action item.
Oh, thank you for that. That's right, we're here to carry it forward. Thank you.
Yeah, just because I didn't want confusion where we were trying a different layout, all of those pieces. So while we are authorized on second reading to do some action, I did not list it that way, just so we could really look at format. On those, they would be listed under a potential action item.
Great. So unless there are questions, we'll see this on the next agenda under action. Any questions? All right. We move then to agenda and resolutions for the September 25, 2023 annual meeting. We welcome Mr. Sarno to the podium, who's going to walk us through this.
Good evening. I appreciate your time this evening. When I was looking back at my documents, we started budget discussions internally back in November, almost, almost, what is that, about nine months ago? And shortly after that, in February, we started, there's been several milestones. We've been presenting information and sharing, and we have one of those other large milestones coming up here towards the end of September. We only have one regularly scheduled board meeting, and then we have our annual budget hearing and annual meeting. And so that date has been determined. It was previously a resolution that's rolled forward into determining the date, but 104th annual meeting coming up here on September 25th. It's at the high schools, Silver Linings Art Center Auditorium. Would like to invite everybody, it's really a meeting for the public, and you'll see that in here where there may be some formalities with the board. Much of this is centered around soliciting input from the community and giving that opportunity for them to hear information as well as support that. So I have a sample of the meeting, registration starting at six o'clock. We have the budget hearing starting first, a public hearing of the 2023-24 budget starting at 6:30. And after that, which I generally take about a half an hour to go through that document and the required slides, but after that, then we have an annual meeting of which, and there is some formality to that, I see we have board member compensation on there twice. I apologize for that. We have two resolutions that are brought forward at this meeting. The first one is a resolution for the tax levy. I'd like to point out that at this point in time, we're finalizing some of the dollar amounts that are in yellow, both the overall levy as well as setting one that is binding at this meeting, the rest are advisory. But the one that is binding that we can already move forward with is how much money we set aside for capital project funds. And that amount has been determined at $1.8 million. It's a rounded up number of 4% increase from last year's dollar amount that we set aside, which was about $1.725 million. But we'll finalize these numbers here for the annual meeting. In fact, I'll bring them forward on September 11th, sharing further information, asking for your approval of this document to bring it forward at the meeting on the 25th. The second resolution that we have is board compensation. So a couple of years ago, it increased from $2,500 and $2,600 for board members as well as officers up to the current rate of $5,052. And then there's a second piece of that talking about when board members are acting on the school district's behalf, traveling and such. We have several required steps, excuse me. We have a Class 1 budget notice, that's due at least 10 days before the annual meeting, so we'll make sure that that gets taken care of in the next couple of weeks. There's a Class 2 notice for just notice of this meeting, which has two different stipulations. It has to go in the newspaper twice, as well as a comprehensive budget publication. Last year, we elaborated a little bit more, had multiple pages with a lot of different financial information. But those are coming up as well. As we, school starts here in the next week or two, we start with our third Friday in September count. Friday in September count. We get information from the Department of Public Instruction, Department of Revenue, and everything is really finalized at that second meeting in October, which is, I believe, the 24th or 25th, if I'm not mistaken. But again, we'll be bringing this forward at September 11th for your acknowledgement to bring this forward to the community. Any questions on the topic?
So this is a discussion item. So this will come back for action next time?
Correct.
And I think you noted it in, and I think you also noted it in discussion. The first resolution is advisory.
Correct.
But that is the, that is the appropriate procedure. I know we've done that for all the years I've been on school board, but just to, just to explore it, that it is, that it is advisory, which is interesting.
Yeah. The only item that is not is the 1.8 million that's disclosed in the yellow highlight. The others are advisory, non-binding.
True.
Not, not untraditional by any means to have this.
Other questions? Kurt?
Do we anticipate more concern about tax levy this year because of property values, I think, increasing significantly for a lot of homeowners and businesses across the city? So I'm just anticipating it might be an issue, a raised issue with some fearing high tax levies. I know there's been some communication that we think the tax levy is decreasing. So I'm just doing this for open discussion. Have we thought about it? And if we haven't, maybe I'm just bringing that up as a topic.
I apologize. Oh, I, I have one here. I, I think I got it. I dislodged it. That's a, that's a great question. So in 2223, the year that we just ended, we levied 6.1 million dollars for referendum approved debt. That's where back from the Badger and Silverbrook Projects, we levied the last of those dollars and we're done now. Still have to pay for it a couple of years, but all the money is in holding. So right off the bat, we're not levying 6.1 million dollars for debt because we're done. And we don't have any more authority to levy any additional dollars unless a referendum were to be brought forward and approved. Okay. What I, what I have found is that in Baird, RW Baird, our advisors that we have, they shared a document here a couple of weeks ago already, that they're anticipating that our property value is going to be increasing by about 13, 13.1, 13.2%. Now you think, how much of that is just inflation versus how much is new growth? Across the state, only 3% of that, on average, across the state, is actual new value versus just inflation. So if you, you know, break that out between the two, it's a 10% increase in values and maybe 3% growth. But that, that's, we, we don't, we don't get a breakout of that. So I'm just going off of those averages. So really, when I, when I look at it, the, the actual levy, the dollar amount that we're going to be levying, it, it probably will go down. Now, there's still some variables about the, the revenue limit increase was fairly sizable. It was the first one that we'd received. That was a part of the state by new budget that was approved. That's new. How much is the state going to fund of that? Let alone as well, there's a 40% increase approved for vouchers. So right now, we're three point, we're levying of our district dollars, not state funded, district levy for vouchers. Students that we live in within our, our area that go to private schools, 3.6 million dollars. Are there going to be new voucher students, let alone that's going up by 40%? So everything that I've seen so far has indicated that, that our levy will go down. But that's the levy divided by the property values equals the mill rate. So how much do we pay for per thousand dollars of assessed value? Well, it's just, I just read last Fridays, or I think it was two Fridays ago, the city said, hey, we're being reassessed. They're going through that process right now. And I thought, wow, it's September, almost, I think this was mid, mid-August, but the city of West Bend is reassessing all of their properties. So I asked Jay Shanbo, and I said, hey, will this be appearing on this fall's property tax statements? And yes, it will be. So that's another thing. So as we take a look at that 13% growth, let alone what's happening at the city, and that's where you'll start to see some shifts of the levy in the different municipalities and who's responsible for what. So we do disclose, we disclose all of that as a part of the process, and we make sure that we monitor the old value versus the new value and where there's some variances that happen and who's responsible for what. But the mill rate's going to go down, but values are going up. And so as, as we take a look at a property tax statement, that's going to get mailed out here this, this winter, the district's portion of that will, will most likely go down again, probably just not quite as substantial as it did this last year, which it, it did at that point in time as well.
So again, that's the piece, knowing all those other variables, but that's the one that we're in control of and just considering that our portion of that, we anticipate to decrease again.
Yep.
I would just say thank you for that explanation out there in the public. That was the first question my wife asked me after getting our reassessment in, in the mail. So, and she is somewhat familiar. So I, I think it's going to be a common question. So I'm glad you communicated that.
Thank you. And we've got that finance.
Publicly here, and I just think we need to stay ahead of that communication because we are in a great financial shape and we're being able to afford a lot of things because of our referendum debt being paid off. And we're in a good spot, but there's challenges ahead. But don't, don't panic, people. We're, we're looking at it and being proactive with it.
Noted. I think we'll make sure that we work communications wise with Andy's financial expertise and kind of bring that down to what does that mean and what can I anticipate as a taxpayer from our end.
Other questions? We'll see this back as an action. Oh, I'm sorry. June, go ahead.
I was late to the.
That's all right.
Wait. So I'm looking at this board member compensation, and I'm curious, as I'm reading through it, it kind of indicates that it would reimburse us for travel and doing school district business on regular workdays and expense travel. How do you anticipate, or how, what is your, being new to the board and not knowing how much travel a board member might do through the course of the year, and knowing that our salaries probably vary, how do, how do you get ahead of this? And what kind of impact might this have on the budget?
Yeah. So we, we make sure, so two different pieces there is the compensation itself, and I will have as a part of the preliminary budget, I will roll forward these dollar amounts. Now, a couple of years ago, like I said, they did change, and we made sure that we incorporated the, and this is one of the binding ones. This is by the community, what's approved is, is binding. But if there's a variance from what's presented, we will make sure that we incorporate that into the budget. We're just in interesting times right now that we're still living on those COVID dollars, the ESSR dollars, as we're wrapping up the splint, the spend plan for that. I make sure though, that we budget accordingly for both the wages. And then as well, we have a preliminary budget for travel and for conference registrations and things like that on behalf of the board. Now, that's in October. We'll approve the final budget. But again, remember that revised budget that we do in the spring. If we've gotten through and we haven't budgeted accordingly, whether it's more or less, we do an amendment and we make sure that we balance that out. So, but I do like, oh, please.
Just also, like you said, being new, how do we even forecast that? We know your professional organizations. We know when you have regional meetings. We know when your January meeting is. We plan for your attendance at those. We've got a delegate that goes there. We've got parking. Your costs are very minimal as a board in that, that expense for conferences mileage. This is not a board that's going to any national conference, anything like that. And, and a lot of, you know, one of the nice kind of post-COVID things is that a lot of things have moved to online attendance. So you're able to participate virtually, minimal interruption. So those are the kinds of things that we would look at and reimburse and work with you on. And anytime we're alerting you to, hey, there's this regional meeting, or you know what, you're our delegate, but all other board members are welcome to go to the January conference when we gather. Who's interested in going? We register you through our process and our fee, so we're not reimbursing board members and doing stuff like that. We'll put a call out. We, we take care of those arrangements for you so that we're in charge of that budget as well.
Great question.
All right. Thank you again for the presentation. We move now to our action items. And if it's all right with the board, what I will do is certainly for these first two, start with Superintendent Wimmer, we have two head start items. Have there been any changes to administration's recommendation regarding these two items when we saw them for discussion?
No, no changes. These are procedural and required. Recall that there's a head start committee as well, but it requires dual authorization.
Great. So let's start with the head start carryover requests. There are no changes. Are there any questions regarding that item? Hearing none, I would move to approve the head start carryover request as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
That way? All right. Melanie, it's yours. Thank you. Motion and second to approve the head start carryover request is presented. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll do the same then for the head start strategic plan updates. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, I would move to approve the head start strategic plan updates as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Kelly. John, we'll get around to you, I promise.
Broke Melanie's streak of seconds.
We have a motion and a second to approve the head start strategic plan updates as presented. Final discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries as well. We're then on to policy third reading. So Superintendent Wimmer, maybe you'll walk us through there, but I'll, and if you could just please address any changes to these items since the last time we talked.
There are no changes. We've had lots of discussion, but we wanted to, again, bring this through in an iterative fashion so that we're taking first steps forward. That sets a nice foundation for us. We know we're leaning into that work session. We've got this on upcoming committee agendas to continue to advance the work. But there's some nice updates in this language that serve as a springboard for updated ARs or administrative rules and some internal procedures that we would advance through, again, committee and our board work session. So again, we, we know we've, we've got work to do, but we would like to take a step forward here.
Okay. And I just want to clarify that you had mentioned, so these same policies will be coming forward again to policy and curriculum for further review and updating.
Correct. They'll also be discussed as foundational work for our board work session on the seventh. So you'll see them soon.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't know if it would be best to call these for the, for the minutes separately or if we can do them as a group, but I'll try to do my best. I move to approve the adoption of revised policies 330, moving concepts of standards, adoption and curriculum development into separate policies 313 and 330. 361.1, selection of resources. 361.2, new library media center material selection and reconsideration, and 362, new library media services. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the policies as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And Melanie Wright, we will see these back in future committee work. Thank you. We move then to the 2022, 2023 revenue and expenditures in the aggregate through June 30th of 2023, and we welcome Mr. Sarno back to walk us through this item.
Thank you. I, I will try to be brief. These are meant to be higher level, but every, every, every month, we have something that presents information at the second meeting, financial information, and taking a look at that budget to actual activity on a quarterly basis. We share additional information, a little bit more of a breakout. And where I do like to be brief, and I want to make sure that we stay, keep everybody informed and aware of where we're at, this, this quarterly also compares last year's information through a certain point in time as well. But it's to the point where we had our last Moody's debt rating call, and this specifically was mentioned in there, both the monthly and the, in the consent as well as this presentation. So thank you, thank you for that. I, I do appreciate the opportunity to share the information. We are a fund, and, and again, this is unless, unless you're really familiar with governmental accounting, we're a fund accounting, meaning we silo, the way that our chart of accounts works, we have to silo different funds. And so every one of our different funds, I will have brackets around it. First one right here on the page is Fund 10, our general fund, where the large majority of our regular instructional and support activity, both revenues and green, expenditures and kind of that brownish, orangey. But I, again, revised budget because that was approved as well as to the unaudited. This is through the end of June. Our auditors are here, they're cruising along and doing what they need to do, but they may at some point here make some adjustments. In fact, one just came up today that we need to tweak a subtle revenue that was not captured in here since this was done last week. But again, it then compares to information to last year as well. When you take a look at adding up all of the funds, and the reason that I do that is because during our budget publication, what you'll see here, 10 days at least before the annual meeting, as well as after a budget amendment is done, we're required to post all of our different funds in a summary format in the newspaper in a class one notice. And when you think about it, we are a $110 million organization when you have all of our revenues that are added up. Now, unfortunately, just as an example, right on the front page, down towards the bottom, the expenditures, we have interfund activity of a little over $9.2 million budgeted. The final was 8.7. A little bit of that goes to Fund 50 because we pay for substitute lunches, substitute teacher lunches, but the large majority of that goes to either to Fund 73 for post-employment benefits, or a lot of it, the large majority of it goes to Fund 27, which is special education, because special education isn't funded appropriately. We have to take our money within the revenue limit, provide them revenue to balance out at zero. So one of my talking points today, just as an example, is, Andy, that's only 95% of what you just projected in the estimated budget revision. Yep, we needed less because we balance out Fund 27, but we transferred that money in. And that's important to understand because that money is then also duplicated in a different fund. So when we start to remove out some of these different areas that are duplicated, we're, we're allowed less. And it's, it's really important to remember that we have a, this past year, we had a $10,000 revenue limit. Next year, we have an $11,000 revenue limit. And you multiply that by the 57, 5,800 kids that we educate, students that we educate, that's about how much we spend. And we receive a few extra grants, which are some of these different areas that you see with these federal sources and state sources. We get money from the state or we get money for grants. And a lot of that is really what makes up our revenues in the general fund. But on par, when we take a look at that, we did have some minor variances, a little bit of extra revenue that we didn't initially anticipate. But on the expenditure side, salaries were right where we wanted them to be. Benefits actually trended just a little bit better because when we got our final health information, it was better than what we anticipated. It finished out the, the fiscal year a little bit better, still trending higher than, than we prefer. But all in all, we do see some slower expense, expenses in consumables and equipment, some lower areas that we didn't spend our dollars that we originally anticipated. But we ended up the year slightly in the black. That was due to claiming ESSR dollars to balance out the budget, just like the state told us to, just like we did last year. Okay? Couple next areas that we have are our 20s funds. And again, usually these get squished out. I break them out just a little bit, but we have our Fund 21, which is our gift fund. This is all student clubs and activities, and our students are just really active. Again, I had a amended budget of 1.2 million dollars and they raised 1.5 million. So they're collecting for trips and they're raising money for their different groups, and they ended up in the black again this year. There's a sizable fund balance. We need to be able to address that in a couple of different schools. But again, this is all student dollars. Special education, the middle one, Fund 27, that's where I'd mentioned, these are all the programs and services for students with individualized education plans, IEPs. We needed a little bit less money in that revenue side because we track that to the expenditures. It has to balance out at zero at fiscal year end, and that's what we did between the grants that we claimed and that transfer from the general fund to make that up. So that's where you see a little bit of less, a little bit of variances there. Salaries were right on par. Again, you see benefits are a little bit lighter than, than we originally estimated, but everything else was trending very well. And we balanced out. Fund 29 is our head start. You just took a couple of actions for the carryover. So the last couple of years, they have not spent their full allocation. They do have the ability to carry that forward. That happened again in 2022, 23, that we'll be able to use those dollars moving forward. But again, it's specifically for, again, that siloed effect of Fund 29 is our head start. That's not for a student at Jackson. That's not for a student at Silverbrook or Badger. It's for Head Start, which is across the street for those program of students. Fund 38 is our non-referendum debt. This is where the board has the authority to go into debt, and we have to pay for it inside the revenue limit. We're done with that. There's a million dollars sitting in fund balance after this year, and there's a million dollar payment left. Only, only principal, principal payment coming up, and we're done with our referendum debt, non-referendum debt. Our referendum debt as well, we levied the last of it, almost 6.3 million dollars last year, and all those dollars are set aside. It's difficult to compare it to last year, 18 million dollars of revenue and 23 million dollars of expenses. That's because we defees some debt, we refinance some debt, and we were being fiscally responsible. We got some interest rate lowered. But this year, again, these are both of these referendum and non-referendum debt. We have debt payment cycles, and we hit those. We're done levying dollars for both of them.
So just a follow-up, because we were talking a bit about referendum debt before, the ability to save up for it. So just to, just to clarify, when this is done, that referendum debt is, is paid off and we're debt-free, one idea, I know that taxpayers have told me is, why don't we just take whatever money we normally levied for that and save up? And can you explain? My understanding is that does not work, that we were not able to do that.
Yeah, legally, you're not. In fact, there's been a couple of districts over the years that have tried to do that, and the DPI calls them up the next day, right after they set their levy and said, you didn't have the authority to do that. So the referendum gives the district, it doesn't, there's a question in the referendum, and it's, say, construct a new building or buy some land, but it gives the district the authority to incur debt, not necessarily complete the projects. That's how I do it as well. But it's really given the district the authority to go out for that debt and create a repayment plan. And so without that referendum approval, we don't have the authority to keep levying 6.3 million dollars moving forward. We're done. That, we're, we do have a couple more years of payments, but all those dollars are in an interest-bearing account that will be used when that payment cycle is due over the next two years. Does that answer your question?
No, it does. It does. It sounds like if we're, there are opportunities to save, it would need to come out of the general Fund 10.
Correct.
We need to come out of Fund 10.
Exactly. Yep. And, and there have been districts that have done that. They have been able to do that. We're a low-spending district. Again, we're at that revenue limit ceiling, and it allowed us to go up $1,000 from last year to the year that we're in now, and that's all used. Plus, we're continuing with our ESSR dollars this next year to balance the budget. But we're utilizing those because we're frozen a couple of years, but we're still considered a low-spending district. we're still considered a low-spending district. So, um, we would have to carve out dollars for that to be able to set aside.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be, I'm sure I understood that right.
I appreciate that. We have three different facilities-related funds. Fund 41, our capital expansion, this is where I, uh, indicated we were a little over, uh, $1.7 million last year that we contributed. There's interest in there as well. Um, but, uh, building project expenses, large building expenses, we're continuing with that. There's fund balance that exists in there, which we've been using over the last couple of years. This is that binding piece, the $1.8 million from the agenda item a couple moments ago. Capital Improvements Trust, this is where we'd been putting dollars, uh, when, when available, setting dollars aside. Fund balance does exist, and it can be used at some, uh, any, any point in time now. Um, but, uh, what's represented there, a little over $125,000 is interest income alone. The last area that we have is our Capital Projects Fund, which is the Barton Proceeds. Dr. Temez indicated, uh, um, a couple meetings ago, um, there's no interest income logged in this. We will be bringing that forward in 2023, '24. There's $540,000, um, that, that should be earning interest. So we'll be bringing that forward, but no activity, uh, last year or the year prior. Fund 50 is our next area, nutrition service, so breakfast lunches for both students as well as adults. Um, they came out, uh, just, just slightly in the negative. There's a large fund balance that exists. They have been making some, uh, program, programmatic investments into the program with, uh, um, equipment as well as the staffing costs to make sure that, uh, they're, they're adequately, um, adequately staffed, um, as well as food costs, but, uh, they did a really nice job. Again, this was the first year that they came off of, two years of free meals post-COVID. Um, but, uh, Tom Dembski and his team did a nice job balancing that out, uh, this, this past year. Another area, other post-employment benefit trusts. So these are dollars that are set aside for, um, pensions through the district, health continuation, as well as, um, some type of pension payouts. Um, we did not contribute dollars this past year that we have the previous few years. That's been brought forward back into the 2023-24 budget. It's afforded again, but by not doing it last year gives us, it gave us some flexibility with having some additional ESSR dollars, um, as we ended last year and bridging into this year and potentially even into '24, '25. But, uh, health insurance performed a little bit better, um, as we, again, wrapped up the year. You saw that in a couple, uh, benefit line items, uh, up earlier, but you can see this with our retirees as well. Community Services Funds, so this is one of those areas that's outside of the revenue limit. If you recall, last October, we, uh, levied an additional $200,000 in this area for safety and security, um, but, uh, a little larger levy than we'd seen in the past. Um, we ended with a surplus this year that we'll be able to use a portion of that then to offset this year's levy that we're in right now, but expenses tracked accordingly from the revised budget as we ended the year. Middle school sports, um, a little bit of Silverbrook activity, our school liaison officers, um, our community engagement director, those are all the different areas. And again, I disclose all of that at the annual meeting as a requirement. Last area that we see is Fund 99, which is cooperative sports. Um, this is only the hockey program that we have that we're the fiscal agent. Um, this next year, we're going to be the lacrosse fiscal agent as well for boys, um, maybe boys and girls, um, still being finalized, um, but, uh, that has to be reconciled, um, which it was, um, here at the end of the season. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any comments or questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sarno? This is an action item, correct?
Correct.
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the 2022-2023 revenue and expenditures in the aggregate through June 30th, June 30th, 2023 as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion to approve the 2223 revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through June 30th, 2023. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for walking us through that. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right. We move to future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. Um, we'd originally discussed a policy committee meeting tomorrow. We're going to need to reschedule that, so that'll be coming shortly. But we do have on the calendar, uh, our board work session coming up on September 7th, uh, 2023, here at the Education Service Center, and we're still, uh, evaluating a start time on that, so stay tuned. Then also, our regular board meeting, September 11th, uh, 2023, 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center, and curriculum committee meeting at 4:30 PM, Education Service Center on September 19. I think those are all the items that I have in my notes. Any additions or corrections? Otherwise, that is our calendar. We encourage, uh, encourage you to, uh, look for our official postings to make sure, just in case the time or date or place of the meeting may change. We move then to items for follow-up and communication. Uh, I know in various discussions, we had given you some, uh, bits and pieces of information to bring back for us, and on the construction manager side. Are there any other items for follow-up and communication? All right. Hearing on, we've reached nearly the end of our planned agenda. We have one, we have an item to discuss, uh, in executive session. So I make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute's 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. June, motion and second to adjourn into executive session.
This time, I remembered, it requires a roll call vote. So, I will pull out the, uh, I'll pull it up. Uh, I will call the roll. Ms. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Aragon?
Yes.
Mr. Swigerfoltz, yes. Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session. Have a good evening.